Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Mangano. Mr. Miller.
Yeah.
Mrs. Obrich.
Thank you.
Mr. Thorius. In traffic, along his way. Mr. Bonzavanti.
Here.
Mr. O'Brien. The quorum is present, shall rise to the roof of the cloud. My flag is in the air. The flag, the United States of America, and to the great ones who stand in the nation, under God, invisible through liberty and justice for all. Please help this note to those meeting as required by chapter 271 of the law nineteen seventy five, proposed by the Secretary. It is now time for the, sorry, recognitions and entires this evening. This evening, comments on those recognitions will be presented by the President and Board of the Timothy O'Brien and Superintendent of School, Mr. Isola. Your comments and the recognition, sir.
Mr. Isola, I would prefer you to begin this hour with your name.
Certainly, thank you, sir. Welcome everyone. It's always a great evening when we have an afternoon to celebrate some of the outstanding things that are happening around our district. It seems like they say that at each and every meeting, and that's simply because there's so much to celebrate here in Howell Township. Tonight, we'll begin our recognitions from some of our outstanding students and some of the staff that have supported them in our TSA program. All that, Ms. Engel. Yes. Ms. Engel, introduce the program and our advisors. TSA is the source of product our community and our school leadership for a number of years. Ms. Engel.
Thank you, Mr. Isola. So, at the last board meeting, I was able to announce the wonderful accomplishments of our students who participated at the annual national TSA conference, and several of them are here this evening to receive their recognition. The conference took place this year in Atlanta, Georgia, and there were approximately 5,000 participants, and this year, of those 5,000 students that participated, 2,500 were middle school students, and there were 214 middle school chapters. So, our kids really competed amongst a lot of children throughout the nation. I'd like to first call down Mr. Langenberger, because he was, he is the Middle School South, the Middle School South. Do we have phone numbers, sir?
Yes, I was going to ask Mr. Miller and Mr. Stone if he can run the recording.
So, this year, at the conference, Mr. Langenberger was surprised, because he was named as one of the 2018 National TSA Advisors for the Year. So, great accomplishment. This is due to his efforts, his contributions to the Technology Student Association and the organization, and how much he really dedicates to the students and all of his contributions to that. So, we'll let you.
Thank you. Good celebration.
And want you to stay up, Mr. Langenberger, because you can acknowledge the students that competed at the event. For those of you that were not at last week's board meeting, the kids really did a fantastic job. We had two top 12 place winners, that was between North and South, and we had two sixth-place trophies, one fifth-place trophy, and for the teams competition, we had first nation and a top 10 for our seventh grade team. So, great accomplishment. All right.
What I'd like to do first is I'd like to call down the students that attended TSA Nationals, that placed in both website design, those students placing website design, and those students placing in video game design. So, granted, those students, all right. Now, we represented Howell Township in a number of different events. We were very fortunate, as Ms. Engel has mentioned, that the competition was very challenging and continues to increase every single year, as membership in TSA has hit over 250,000 students, many of whom are middle school students. What they were able to achieve, it is an honor just to attend a national conference, but it is an extraordinary accomplishment to stand onstage and be recognized, or even qualify as a semifinalist, suggesting that you're the best 12 in the nation, and then to be recognized and say you're the best 10 in the nation. So, at first, we would like to recognize two students who placed a sixth place overall in video game design. We'd like to first recognize Lidu. At this time, let's walk them down, those students that were in website design. And at this time, we'd like to recognize Kayla Melendez. Ruth Daly. Diana. Sophia. Jenna Strauss. Again, these students did an outstanding job representing Howell Township and were able to achieve an incredible and extraordinary achievement, and that was they were able to be recognized among the top in the nation for website design and video game design. Thank you. Now, along with national, she's ready to participate. If she's ready for prepared speech or challenging debate issues or challenging technology issues, maybe. Now, she kicked over the whole show. She seemed very good. We were also very honored that we were able to bring this year, we had two teams that qualified at a state level, one team being the New Jersey State Champion, and we were able to attend a national conference for teams. Now, what teams represents is it's the test of engineering aptitude, mathematics, and science, and it actually consists of several parts. The first part is the essay that they needed to submit on a sustainability topic, then they needed to come in on a Saturday and dedicate quite a few hours in the morning to not only taking what is considered to be a college-level engineering test, but they also needed to solve a problem on site. With those combination of those three events, they received both teams, Team One and Team Two, received a qualifying score, so they were able to attend national competition. Once we arrived at national competition, they still had more to do. Before they arrived, they had to form an environmental company and market themselves to potential clients in a video that they submitted. Along also with that, they needed to go down and solve another problem with 25, I think it was 25 problems, was it 25 problems? 25 problems. There were also college-level engineering mathematical equations. They also, on top of that, needed to solve a problem which was building a house to maintain a thermal temperature, and then finally, they had to get more taller poster presentation. They had to actually solve a real-world problem, and they gave them, I would say, not a very unique problem, and that is traffic. And each of the teams came up with a unique way to solve that problem. So, what I'm going to ask them to do is I'm going to call down one team at a time, and I'm going to ask them, they have a team captain, I'm going to ask them just to explain their solution to a traffic problem, because if we all driven on Route 9, we know Aldrich intersection, maybe should adhere to some of these ideas that we're suggesting, but both teams did an outstanding job. And when you hear, "We have a seventh-grade team," they qualified in the top 10 in the nation, this was their first time at Nationals. We had an eighth-grade team, and they qualified as number one in the nation, which is an outstanding recognition for Howell Township. And that's how you end it. So, what I'd like to do first is I'm going to be calling down Team Two first, this is our seventh-grade team. Like to call down, everyone on Team Two, please come down. All right, at this time, we would like to recognize each of them. First, we would like to recognize Connor, fourth place, it's fourth place, right? Fourth place best in the state of New Jersey. Don Price, fourth place best in state of New Jersey. We have Mindy, fourth place best in state in the nation, or it's fourth place, seventh place best, no, sorry. Seventh place best in nation, fourth place best in state. Richard Shenton, we have you third place in prepared presentation, sixth place in digital media, seventh place in nation, and fourth place best in state. And Lidu. Lidu, we have you for third place in prepared presentation, sixth place in digital media, and seventh place best in nation. We're going to take a photograph, I think of Team One, and then we'll take a photograph of Team Two, or we could call down Team Two if we want to do that, which we're calling down. All right. Let's have Team Two, or Team One, come down, these are eighth grades here. Now, as they're making their way down to this, well, stage floor, as they're making their way down to the floor, what I'd like one member of their team to do was just to describe a little bit about their solution. We're going to hear from Team Two. Let's, Team One, move over here for a minute. Just slide over here for a minute. I'm going to give you guys the floor in just a minute. So, what I'd like to do is, our seventh-grade team, tell you a little bit about their traffic solution, that they had to not only present once down at Nationals, but also a second time. So.
Thank you. So, our innovation was called the Go Flow, and it was, when we researched in traffic, we found that fan traffic and this, like, the effect that, we always hear the saying, say the same distance in front of behind of your car, and that will significantly decrease the time on roads. So, our innovation utilizes solar energy and a series of processing units and sensors to detect proper acceleration and deceleration to properly fit the needs of the driver's environment, and the Go Flow also acts as a secondary braking system and can also detect lanes. So, and our hope is that if every single car were to get the Go Flow installed into their vehicle, that there would be no traffic, road congestion would be significantly eliminated.
Now, outstanding. This was their first attempt at teams this year, and it is a very challenging obstacle to overcome, but they were successful. And what was a tremendous honor to Howell Township and to myself was that when they announced the top 10 in the nation, both of my teams were standing on that stage. I don't think we could have asked for anything better in terms of recognition in Howell Township, because we weren't just at teams, we were winning teams, and people were looking at us saying, you know, "Where is Howell?" And I bumped into somebody else, it was another New Jersey team, and when I was telling him that I was the advisor for both teams in TSA, the reputation we have is, "We're the ones that win all the awards." So, that's a good reputation to have, and I have a great collection of students in front of me here today that upheld that sort of banner for Howell Township, that when we put a hashtag and we say "Howell leads," we are leading in this nation, not just in New Jersey, not just in the Northeast, but we're being recognized on a national level. And I have a distinct privilege now to present to you the team that scored in teams, first place in the nation. We competed against the best, and I couldn't have asked anymore, because they were the best. So, let me take a minute and recognize them, and then I'm going to let you tell them about a little device they brought to solving problems with traffic. One, we'll step. All right. Kayla Melendez, first place best in media. She has two certificates, almost like a longer resume here. Fourth place in prepared presentation, sixth place in problem solving, fifth place in digital media, and first place best in nation. Mason Weiss, come on up here. First place best in states, fourth place best in prepared presentation, sixth place in problem solving, fifth place in digital media, and first place best in nation. First place best in states, fourth place in prepared presentation, sixth place in problem solving, fifth place in digital media, and first place best in nation. First place best in states. Listen, if you don't smile, I'm going to give you the mic. Fourth place best in prepared presentation, sixth place in problem solving, fifth place in digital media, and first place best in nation. Sophia. First place best in states, fourth place in prepared presentation, sixth place in problem solving, fifth place in digital media, first place best in nation. Diana, we have first place best in states, fourth place in prepared presentation, sixth place in problem solving, fifth place in digital media, and first place best in nation. Now, they worked very hard to achieve the success, and I don't want to steal the microphone away from them and that, I would like them to just have an opportunity to show you part of what got them to the place that they are. First place best in media.
So, our idea was called Safe Merge. The Safe Merge consists of two light-arrows sensors placed on the side of the highway in addition to the sign that we made a model of here. This sign that would be placed in between the ramp and the highway itself would show the driver on the ramp how long they had to merge, shown here, four seconds, and if it were also safer, and this would be displayed as the yellow or a green light. Center.
What's up, George?
So, in addition to the graphics that would be displayed on here and the data that would be displayed to the driver, there would also be these two solar panels that were powered to display, meaning that it would be sustainable. So, that's our idea.
And I wanted to show you for a moment, not only did they go down and compete at teams, but they had to leave early, because my first-place team were all eighth-grade students. So, they had to leave the national conference a day early, fly home, come here to make sure they were here for graduation practice that day, and then graduate that night. They have done an incredible job, and the presentation that they gave not only should make all of us proud, but it demonstrates the kind of leadership that we're demonstrating here in Howell Township. We are building students that are ready not only for tomorrow's challenges, but they're ready to communicate the effective solutions to those problems. And as I said to both teams before, and I'll say it again, I could not have asked of anything more than what you gave. You gave 110%, as you always have, and as our eighth-grade students move on to high school, I look forward to seeing them again in the leadership roles that they will assume. And our seventh-grade team, I'm looking forward to them stepping up next year and being able to come back and share with us the success that they had at next year's national conference. So, congratulations to them. Thank you again.
And I'd like to call down Mrs. Sales. She's the TSA advisor for North. I believe actually Mrs. Sales led a team in teams, first in nation, a couple years ago, so she's very familiar with this. So, Mrs. Sales.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Thank you once again for allowing us to be here. I'd like to say that meeting all the advisors from all the states in the country down at Nationals, the one thing that we have an advantage for is the support we have from our Board of Education. They envy your support, and not every state has that. We also could not be as successful without the support of our parents. As you can see, they make it possible to participate against all these other states, and we're so proud of them. They did a fantastic job. Thank you again. I'd like to call Rowena, one of my TSA board members. Rowena did prepared speech as her competitive event, so I feel it was fitting for her to give a speech tonight.
TSA was an experience that gave valuable life skills. It gave all of us an opportunity to not only work with new people, but to also enhance our knowledge through activities and competitions. TSA allowed us to compete in state-level competitions and national-level competitions, which can have over thousands of students, but of course, none of this would have been possible without the support of our Board of Education. They have given all of us the ability to come together as a school and explore these opportunities, hone in on our passions, and work towards our goals. We thank you for all, we thank all of you for making all this possible and giving us these new opportunities to really enhance our lives. We are also grateful to our assistant, we're also grateful to our advisor, Ms. Sales, who has worked so hard for each and every one of us. She's putting the extra effort to make sure that we don't have any issues and that we're prepared for all of our competitions. You have really made our experience at TSA a better one, and we're so thankful to have you.
Say up here, Rowena. Okay. At our national conference, we had Savannah Shangar, who placed in the top 12 in promotional marketing. We had Rowena, and Anushka, and Savannah placed in fifth place in community service video. That is a video made after raising money for American Cancer Society, which is a partner of TSA Nationals, and they put together fundraisers and they raised a lot of money, and we sent it to the American Cancer Society. So, Rowena, thank you for all your hard work. They also placed sixth place in coding, which is a new event this year. So, they did a great job. Thank you all.
Rowena. It's time for our recognition retirees at this point. Manu Bowser. All right. Good evening once again. Awesome, thank you. We have Mr. Bonzavanti and Ms. Mangano joining me here, seeking to assist in the recognition of our retirees. Of the last few meetings, we had the opportunity to recognize some of our retirees. Some are unable to attend, but tonight, we're very pleased, we have two retirees, and they're both currently from Memorial Elementary School, so, dear friend Allison, Keeling, our principal of Memorial Elementary School, come on up. Can you give me some statistics or some timelines for each of our retirees? But this young lady I know very well and very personal, and I'll share some of my own thoughts. But Al did join Howell Township as a teacher at our Dina School, as a third-grade teacher, I believe, in 1990. She remained there from 1998, when Joe Polinsky, one of your great mentors and someone you hold dearly, I know, had the wisdom to give Allison the opportunity to partner with him at Gribbling Elementary School as the vice principal of that school, and in that leadership role, Allison flourished each and every day. And if you speak to some of the colleagues in which she worked with in that role, to this day, Mr. Boris says how much, and he's our principal of Ramada, how much he owes, I don't know if he ever told you that, Al, but how much he owes to Ms. Keeling for supporting him and giving him an opportunity. I know, I see Mr. Dustin up there, another former colleague of Ms. Keeling, along the 524 corridor, one foot. In 2003, we were opening up two new elementary schools, and Adelphia was in need of a first principal, a principal that could lead a brand-new building, a principal that could build culture and build community, and lead in a way that there had been no blueprint for. And Dr. Bowden, my predecessor, predecessor, had the amazing wisdom to select Allison to lead the opening of this brand-new school, and to bring a staff together for the first time, and lead that exciting charge, and Adelphia quickly became one of the crown jewels of this district, and that is clear in my mind, and in my, as I stood witness as a colleague of Allison's as principal of this building, it was hard leadership, hard diligence, hard commitment that made Adelphia the very special place that it remains today, and that's called building a legacy, Al, and you certainly did that each and every day you entered the school building. So, I learned a lot from Dr. Bowden, and one thing was very clear, when opening When opening a new school, which I haven't had the pleasure of doing, but we did reconfigure, and we did repurpose Memorial Middle School to Memorial Elementary School, back in 2015, in essence, a brand-new school. So there was a lot of support and community at that time, and I knew I needed to put a leader in this building that can build culture, that can create climate, where students feel welcomed and cherished, and a staff can quickly be brought together. And I didn't have to look far, maybe not to her initial liking. I had Allison to lead Adelphia and spearhead the efforts at Memorial Elementary School, in essence, a brand-new building in Howell Township. And without fail, I'll never forget the opening day, the red carpet and the stars, and kids entered that building feeling like the most important children in America. And they were. They were under Allison's care. And Memorial has gelled, has come together, and is clearly, clearly one of our crown jewels already in that short period of time. And that is specifically due to Ms. Kealan's leadership. Allison, as your colleague, when I served as principal of this school, you and I enjoyed a very cooperative relationship, and I knew one thing for sure. If I needed a straight answer and I needed advice, call Al, and she'll tell you the way it is. You may not like what you hear, but it will be truthful, intelligent, and it will help you advance the work you were trying to do. And Allison, you've been true to that every single day of your career, and Howell Township is so fortunate for your leadership, for your time spent here in the classroom, and as a vice principal and principal, and my friend, who will sorely, sorely be with you. Congratulations. So it's become a condition that we plant a brick, replacing a brick memorializing the careers of the individuals that retire. We used to, I say this every time, we used to give that old round, standard plaque that people put in the drawer somewhere. Now we put a brick right out here in our garden, or at Middle School South, depending on where you spent your career. For Allison, being a 524 car, or a little school north, will be the appropriate location. And that brick will be planted in Allison's honor and capture her time here forever. And you will, when the bricks are made, receive a small token of replica brick, a big one. So, and that's displayed right there. So congratulations once again, Al. Every once in a while, you catch lightning in a bottle. So, where's Manny? Come on up, Manny. Manny has been a long colleague of Allison's. They were at Adelphia together as the principal secretary, and Manny followed Allison over when I needed the dynamic duo to do their magic over at Memorial Elementary School. And I'll just speak briefly, because when I say you get lightning in a bottle, how awesome that they're retiring together, and that Allison will have an opportunity at tonight's meeting to speak so passionately about her dear friend and her sidekick for all these years. But I do want to say just a few words about Manny. Manny is someone that, when you speak to her, you just feel better when you're done talking to her. You know, you're like, wow, this is good, you know? She knows just calm, which Allison often needed. She was always focused on doing the right thing for children. And when I tell you you feel better after speaking to Manny, I can't tell you how many times I've been to the school, I've stopped in, and my day was hectic. By the time I said goodbye, maybe, "See you later," you know, "Tell Al X, Y, Z," and I ran out of the door because I didn't want to tell Al myself. By the time I got to my class, she just made me feel great, you know? And a lot of you won't do that to super nanny, but Manny always did. And Manny, I thank you for that. I thank you for your calming effect in our office when parents would come in with the next emergency, and, you know, they need to see something right away. Allison, Allison was always supported by Manny, and her ability to calm the situation. I can tell you on countless occasions, parents would call with what they thought was a crisis, and they left laughing and smiling, or hung up that phone saying, "Wow, my kids are in divorce." And Manny, that's what you did for so many years for this district. I know you started as a, or a year or two maybe, as an assistant, if I remember correctly, in basic skills. And then she went to an office assistant position, and I believe in Allison, and you left one of the powers in Adelphia as your first gig as principal secretary. What a great, what a great spot for you. And that was, you talk about those people moving in advance, and in that role, you really shined. Again, Howell Township, the culture here, Manny shared your work as Allison's other half. It was amazing and much appreciated. So congratulations.
I know. This is truly an honor for me to, 20 years ago, I was fortunate enough to move to Gribling, and Manny was there waiting. And from the first day I met her, she just took care of me and helped me in any way possible. And like I said, Manny has the ability to do things that you don't even realize things are happening, and then all of a sudden, an office is created that things that you didn't even plan on, she would take care of. And I never even noticed it in the midst of trying to get everything else done. But more importantly, she is an amazing human being, and I have been blessed to spend time with her every single day for the last 20 years. And you've become family. And to be a part of her family and watch her family is amazing, and I feel so fortunate because there is no better human being to spend 20 years with. And I will miss you, but we'll still see each other. Congratulations.
There's a lasagna story in this, but I'm not going to be long for now. But stay tuned, it could go public soon.
That concludes our recognitions this evening. Mr. President, we do have leave for an executive session this evening. Take a recess for the public to leave, but we will adjourn to executive with a motion and a second. Board will be in executive session. Please, motion printed in the agenda. The items this evening are a parental gift appeal, personnel matter, and an update on late- thank you. The board will return after the executive. Please note the correspondence. The correspondence board is deeply noted for the record. It's not time for the board president's comments. The president of the board, Mr. Tim Teal, may have comments, sir.
Thank you, everybody. We're off to a good start for the summer. I know behind the scenes, it's not working, but preparing for what will soon be here will be a nice, uh, two short ones. I want to thank the staff of us, and everybody involved for their hard work, and the board for this successful thing. In between that time, the board is gathering a retreat on Thursday first, and we have a very robust agenda. We're excited to sit down and do work. So with that, I also, again, commend our staff, and I commend those who retired tonight. Thank them for their service. Also commend Mr. Leonard for his achievement as the number-one TSA national. And for our incredible students who gather in this. So thank you, sir, and Mr. Isola.
Thank you, sir. Just some visual updates, and just to our recognitions that we did earlier. First, I'd like to say that the Sangre and the IT staff has worked diligently to bring in our new website. We are looking at our own, actually, the building process is concluded now. Tomorrow, I was sitting with some members of the IT staff, and thought to go through the actual landing pages and kind of personalize them and give them the Howell touch, you know, the allies and the stuff. And I'm very excited to share in an upcoming, boy, the new website, all dealing with our community. We do think it will certainly support our district in a positive way. So I want to just let you know that as we've been talking over the last few months of the, my preaching from our old new website, we're very close and quickly finishing that work throughout the summer, and be prepared for a September, we'll be opening new schools here, and we will certainly have a new website open right. So very excited about that. As you are all aware, through our communication with the board and social media, there was a playground fire this past weekend over at Newbury Elementary School. We, I have spoken with the community this afternoon. There are investigations ongoing in the police side of that view, and there is no, you know, immediate suspect or anything in that nature, but the investigation is ongoing. I am not suggesting that this is possible, we're not sure, but those things are all being examined to see what the cause may have been. It may end up being closed, unresolved, and we'll see. I know the SASAC and these staff is hard to believe from the research side of things and see what updates would have to be made to get our playground open right for the students as soon as possible, and SASAC may do the head.
Just, I also spoke to Ms. Maddie today. We'll be putting that on our next operations committee meeting as well. We'll be meeting with the vendors, as well as doing research at Consumer Product Safety Board, and some other venues of both research and anecdotal use of the different products, either playground equipment and/or the cushion material, and we'll be reporting to operations as well as taking action in the district.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll keep you updated, and we can find you by the police fire bureau, the fire bureaus, as well as the SASAC, which will be the organization for me. So hopefully, with that already being remedied, and it's possible for our students, everything we have to schools in September.
If I may, I was talking about the product side, and you just reminded me, we've already had our insurance investigator out, and it is fully covered except for our small deductible, and we'll be moving forward on that as quickly as possible to also replace the equipment for the children. I can't say, there's a long lead time on ordering, so I can't say it'll be up until September, but we'll move with all due diligence.
Thank you. Mr. President, we're handing down the suspension sheet for the June report. Our last, it looks clear ended, and we are to report to you that we have 28 suspensions at National Children's Hospital in March, June. And this time, we have one through my, what, I, uh, blue capsule.
I believe we need to still do the school grades on.
Yes, we can stay in that for a minute.
Shall we move to committee updates? Would you want to?
We have concluded.
Yes, sir.
There we are, committee updates, and I would like to move to my left, to my seat, policy, and advocacy chair. Do you have any personal advocacy or?
Maybe I'll start with the policy. Policy committee met last night, and it came out with a lot of work done, but it's not on our agenda tonight, understandably. Well, we act, in other words, we can't move it along, but not to a consideration of the right, so it's not reflected in our agenda. I might just quickly note the topics that were considered last night. Policies and regulations involving athletic competition and medical examinations for scholastic, excuse me, athletic scholastic events. I had really cheerfully admitted that there is a policy consideration of our student suicide convention. Another one about student smoking, we talked quite a bit about vaping. Some of the information, the changes that we're going to bring to the board have to do with state mandates about new information that will go to parents and students about possibility of cardiac problems or arrest, and opioid use and dangers, what we'll do about that. We also, with the policy regulations involving use of physical restraint, exclusion techniques for students with disabilities, again, to update what we have going from the state, as well as reporting potentially missing abuse children, policies on that. Just making general comment, because we often go through the greater detail of the policies coming for you. But basically, a lot of it is reflection of updates on a statewide level, and also many of the things, we're, again, we talked about how being a leader, many of these things we were in that place, many of the specifics sitting there, and they reflect in the. And then there's one other issue that we're going to, back to the professional oriented committee. We had an issue about board member orientation and training. The press explained, we do that job, and I would, but I'll just mention it. What happened is, I guess the committee has met and talked about board, new board member orientation and training, and there are elements in policy, particularly in regulation that we have, that may want to be incorporated in the management. So there's that policy looking at the professional.
Well, I get the sources, but I have to, we're very bad in the language that we know.
So we have that. Our legislative advocacy committee, a couple of points, I would just make a point, I mentioned I talked to Mr. Miller, our chair of finance committee. Obviously, we all know that there are various changes coming out on the state level as far as the state funding for you, and that would affect us and our concern for that. So I would just say that that's obviously something the board is looking at, and we'll continue to look at that on a regular basis, and finance committee particularly focusing on that. But I mentioned, when we say advocacy committee, I think we'll follow up on this and see if there's anything coming from the board and from the finance committee that we might want to recommend at some point. This is an issue of such great importance, it affects the quality of education for students, and we have to have our tax base as well. One other thing, we, from these positive dates that I spoke to Mr. SASAC today, and we're talking possibly of the legislative advocacy committee meeting next on either August 14th or 15th, one of those two dates. At our last meeting, we talked about the possibility of various resolutions that we would present before the New Jersey School Board Association. And in particular, we talked about statewide assessment, testing, you know, following up on changes to what we have with the park test. And so again, things are changing there, and I know the New Jersey Education came out with a new report today, but we hope that perhaps on one of those days, 14th or 15th, committee can meet and see whether we want to do something with the resolution, in that area or any other area.
My operations have not met. I'm going to go to the meeting, we scheduled our next meeting for Tuesday, 17th, probably around, we're going to talk about the playground, the school, and, uh, the, great, whatever thing that's going on.
Thank you. And Mr. President, if you have anything to say, anything you have to say.
Education is working on its second stage. We're looking at, we need to buy, we can, probably say, we have to, but we'll make that all the same. We need to get back to that, but I think that, and Mr. Miller may be the president, we're not pressing on that school board, but he and I are sending meeting, we're setting trend, talking about the funding, hospital, plans, and agendas, for the county meetings all for the next, and I'll follow up. Finance has not met, but we're still watching the budget, the budget, as you know, see budgeted.
The budget, as you know, is a budget to get proofed however, S2 has not been signed yet and that always supposedly part of the deal. Unfortunately, that is a thought that would cut us by a half million dollars this year and will over ten and a half million dollars over seven weeks. So we are watching that go very closely to see if that gets signed, hopefully not. So we'll keep an eye on that. As the bottom line says, county met last night, happy to put that two of our, two of five county meetings will be held in Howard this year. We have different topics such as speech writing, social media, we're doing CSA evaluation, boards going wild, which some of us succeed, finance 101 and A grade dialogue and of course our legislature meeting in that.
I'll just say that these, one of the things that these come up was that you remember last year, we were close for a program, we posted in Hollis County, Hollis County was close, last time we were able to go for our own county friends and get them to take that program, post to county, said that plus the individual name, which we were very close to a program.
Yes, thank you. And you need to have the presentation of the hearing for the school grades under, for the presentation of the school grades under the anti-bullying bill of rights, sorry.
So I have the annual grading. They're taken from July 1st through June 30th each year. There are many core elements that are involved in the grading of the schools for them. They include the different trainings on policies and procedures, death, destruction training, suicide, disprevention, how the bullying, anti-bullying specialists are training, climate ability, prescription instruction on kids, his personnel, recording procedures, et cetera. And we talk about these each year and then the, each individual building collects evidence throughout the year to prove that their rating is accurate. So they, all the things they do within their own particular buildings, they actually have to keep the documentation of those things so that they can accurately score themselves and then prove, be able to prove that that score is a true score for each of the buildings. So out of a total of 78, I have the scores for each building. Adelphi's school is 75, Aldridge 74, R D is 75, Rainbow 74, Gribling 74, Landline 75, Memorial 74, Newberry 75, Grandtown 74, Haunted 74, Middle School North 76, and Middle School South 73. And those numbers are comparable to last year as well, which were the highest score, one of the buildings was 76 this year and then most of the other scores were between 74 and 75, a total of 27.
I believe being a confessional is a good.
Yes, yes. And it is, you know, there's, as you know, there's a lot that goes into everything that's done over the course of the year related to, you know, our kids and, you know, collecting and documenting is an arduous task, but the buildings do work very hard to make sure that, you know, A, that they're doing the right things that they need to do and B, that they're keeping track of all of those things so we can actually report this. So I commend their efforts and all the work that they do throughout the year to make sure that we continue to work towards having climates for our, for our kids and our staff that are pleasant ones and as always, we have plenty of work to continue to do.
Well, I think the board appreciates the hard work because the interventions and supports that go on behind the numbers are what make it happen, especially in the lives of our kids. So thank you to you and all the staff for their diligence and work and scores reflect the, that.
Well, thank you and thank you for all the support.
Any questions from the board? Seeing none, I believe that would conclude.
Yes, it is time for the first, first public comment. I'm excited.
Very good.
Whereas the House of Representatives, in terms of comments from the public, may last 45 minutes and those comments will be conducted in accordance with file on 64.1 and individuals may be limited to three minutes each. The officer with respect to time and decorum will be the president of the board, Mr. Timothy O'Brien. With one acknowledgement this evening, I would ask that the first request be hearing on any questions from the public on the presentation on the anti-bullying bill of rights and then subsequently any general questions. With your permission and that proviso, may the floor be open for both of those purposes?
May.
Are there comments on the anti-bullying bill rights first and then public comments in general? Seeing none on both, sir, may the floor be closed?
Closed.
I have no pre-scheduled discussion items this evening?
And I believe we're up to the agenda?
The agenda, sir.
Okay, need a mover and a second? Move by. Mr. Thor seconded.
I'm sorry, who is the mover and second?
Mr. Oakerson moved it. Mr. Thor seconded.
Thank you. We have some read-ins this evening. And this is the agenda and agenda, sir?
Yes, please.
Read-ins on 3000-1, appoint Kathleen Stigliano, K-A-T-H-L-E-N-S-T-I-G-L-I-A-N-O. On 3013, please insert the name Gabrielle Burkhart, Gabrielle, G-A-B-R-I-E-L-L-E-B-U-R-K-A-R-T, 1MA 54,300. On 3014, insert the name Caitlin Cooper, K-A-I-T-L-Y-N, Cooper, common spelling, 1MA 54,300, excuse me for spitting that. On 3015, insert the name Sarah Ziden Weber, Sarah, S-A-R-A-H, Ziden, Z-I-E-D-E-N, hyphen, Weber, W-E-B-E-R, 1MA 54,300. On 6003, insert the company name Jersey Coast Fire Equipment Company, Farmingdale, New Please pull 3016 from the agenda this evening and on 3017, leaving the first item Molly Call Winter and the, looks like sixth item Courtney DeMaro, pull the rest of that table from 3017. The other items are pulled from the agenda. With that being said, sir, may I take it around?
Please do.
Mrs. Oakerson?
Yes.
Mr. Thor?
Yes.
Mr. Germer?
Yes, with the following extension, 3000-1.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Mall?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Den.
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Von Devine?
Yes, except I refuse on 3001, 3002 and I'm seeing on page one.
Thank you, sir. Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
The agenda and the agenda with the readings or the agenda with the readings and the agenda are for eight votes in favor, none opposed, with the extensions noted for the record.
Very good. Second, follow down.
Whereas the Howard Board of Education, chairman's comments may last 45 minutes and those comments will be conducted in accordance with its file and individuals may be limited to three minutes each. The officer will again be Mr. O'Brien, president of board, with your permission, may the floor be open?
It's open.
Other comments at this time?
Seeing none.
Seeing none? That is it, I believe. We started with Isola and said.
Wait, that's all their motion?
Well, the motion, I'd act one more time as we did with the plan of our principals this evening, the plan of Katie Stiglenhout, a question.
Thank you. Now.
Move it.